To call to order this month's zoning board of appeals meeting. Our chair, Andy, could not be here tonight unexpectedly. My name is Richard Peterson and I will be taking the chair position for this meeting. First thing on our agenda tonight is old and new business. Approval of minutes from July 8th, August 5th, both open in executive session and September 9th. My understanding, this is not correct, is that for the executive session, those minutes will not be made public until whatever issues are resolved.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we want to have any discussion about the minutes?
No.
Do we want to motion them one at a time or do you want to motion them all?
I'll say we'll motion one at a time.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 8th, 2021 minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If that passes, let's take up the August 5th one. If we have a motion for August 5th minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the August 5th meeting, not the executive session.
Right, hold that off. Richard? Yeah, Richard, hold that off.
Yeah.
What did Andy say? Did Andy say that we could accept them all?
Could accept them, but they just won't publish the executive session ones until...
All the managers are opposed. Okay. Could you second this one?
Yep.
Because you were here for that one. I wasn't.
Alright, so amend that. Make a motion.
You want to do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept August 5th, 2020 minutes. This is the executive session, please. Just so you know. You were here for that one. Yes, I was. Executive session two. All in favor?
Oh, is it, I was going to see, was there...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. And then for September 9th, motion to approve the minutes of September 9th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes as well. The first order of business tonight is the continued hearing on petition, 207 Bedford Street. Need to read this. The town of Abington's zoning board of appeals, hold a public hearing on today's date, it's on Thursday, June 10th, 2021, it's been continued till now. Petition of Lamb and, I want to make sure I don't butcher that, Pichau, Pichu, again, 207 Bedford Street, Abington, for special permit under 175-40 C Ford, they're constructing apartment building within the TC zone at 207 Bedford Street. Property is located on assessors map 23, lot 25, in the transitional commercial district. This has been continued twice. Is anyone here representing that project? Is anyone here to speak on that project, for or against? No. If there's no representative here, we might as well push it off to the end of the meeting.
What's that?
If the representatives are not here, we'll push this off to the end of the meeting. Because they're not here, so...
Can we have any, we could close it to a public discussion and then revisit it later. I was going to ask a question for the board members.
I would actually just hold off until the people come here that...
Alright, we'll put it off until...
Because there's no one here representing them.
Right.
So we just want to make sure that they get their fair chance. So we're going to hold this off and we're going to move it right to the end of the meeting. So let's do that, which is the last one. Okay. That would be 12 Forside Drive. Yes, so we're just going to move that right to the, move this right down to the bottom. Give them a second chance, alright? They want to agree?
I agree.
Yeah. Okay. Next. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the continued hearing for, let me check I got this the right way here. For the petition of Donald Knoll, 30 Orchard Lane, Abington, for finding per chapter 40, section 6 to change current pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling under section 175-72 at 78 Center Avenue. The property is located on assessors map 23, lot 138, in the R30 zone. Is anyone here to speak for the project?
Mr. Chairman, because I was here, I'll board this.
You'll be voting for this one. Please identify yourself and let us know what you have to say.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Attorney Barry Krimmons for the applicant, Mr. Donald Knoll, on the continued hearing for this matter. And I'm sorry, I think, I think the first question I was just going to ask, maybe it was just addressed, but I didn't hear what the answer was, whether, which member is sitting as the third member tonight?
The third member for voting.
Okay, thank you. So if the members will recall, this is an application, you know, we looked at this one one of two ways originally, whether it should come under chapter 48, section 6, or come under section 175-72 of the zoning bylaw. The members are aware that at the last meeting, the board received an opinion from town council that basically said that the application should more appropriately be submitted as a special permit under section 175-72 of the zoning bylaw. And without reading that verbatim, but although it is quoted in the letter from town council, what it really comes down to is the property, whether it's classified as a two-family or a three-family, would be considered a pre-existing non-conforming use. Even if we acknowledge it as a two-family, the app, which is again, pre-existing non-conforming use, the application is to convert an existing or pre-existing non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, i.e. the three-family, which is allowed by special permit from the board under 175-72, so long as the board makes a finding that that change in use would not be, and now I think, I think I will quote from it, Mr. Chairman, where it states that may be changed to another non-conforming use, provided the new use is not a substantially different use as provided below, and approvals for such changes granted a special permit by the board of appeals. For the purpose of this section, a substantially different use is a use which by reason of its normal operation would cause readily observable differences in patronage, service, site, noise, employment, or similar characteristics from the existing non-conforming use. I would suggest to the board that the addition, or the creation, if you will, of a one-bedroom unit in the basement level of this building would not rise to the level of meeting the characteristics stated in the bylaw of readily observable differences. In fact, I think there would be no observable differences in creating one additional one-bedroom unit. Keep in mind that, for instance, that lower level, if it were not to be converted to a separate dwelling unit, could still be used as additional living space. And as such, again, whether it was used as additional living space as part of the unit above it, or was as a separate unit, again, I don't see where there would be any observable differences in the criteria, again, patronage, service, site, noise, employment, or similar characteristics. I think the language in the bylaw talks about something that really is going sort of from one extreme to another. For instance, it's more typical in the commercial context, where there's a change in use from, from something that, you know, as it says, things like patronage, service, site, these are noise, these are things we think of, I think, more in a commercial context, you know, going from a factory use to a restaurant, for instance, or something of that nature. But going from a, going from a two-family to a three-family, again, I don't, I don't think the, I don't think anyone would suggest that any of those characteristics would be triggered by such a change in use. I do want to briefly, and I think the members have, I hope they have, a packet of information that we submitted, again, in keeping with town council's letter where it was suggested that since we had raised the possibility that it could be a section 6 finding case as well, and she indicated that in her opinion, again, more appropriately, a special permit case. We put together a packet that kind of goes through the brief history of the property from the time that my client purchased the property in October of 2017. And I think there's a couple of exhibits there that I would like to point out to the members for your attention. One is the smoke detector certificate that was issued by the Abington Fire Department when the property was purchased. As the members are certainly aware, and certainly Mr. Nagrilli in particular is aware, you sell your property, seller has to produce a smoke detector certificate. Fire department comes out, inspects the property, make sure there are proper smoke detector certificates. Well, that inspection was done in September of 2017 in conjunction with my client's purchase of the property. And again, a smoke detector certificate was issued by the Abington Fire Department. The property was purchased in October of 2017. At that time, that basement unit was occupied, and was occupied by the same tenant who was still occupying the property in January of this year, when the incident arose that gave rise to the application being submitted to you. So that property, in fact, our review of the records at the town would suggest that going back to at least the early 2000s, if not in fact, the 1990s, that lower level was occupied. But again, the issue before the board isn't, was it a two-family, was it a three-family? It's, you know, is the conversion from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use allowed, so long as the board finds, again, that those characteristics stated in the bylaw are not triggered. The, the other part of that, I mentioned the incident in January of this year, one of the other exhibits we've included is the letter that my client received from the building inspector. And what you see in that letter is the only issue he raised was the fact that the property is not allowed as a three-family in the R30 zone. Okay? And so once again, that's what gave rise to us submitting the application to this board. Okay? It was simply a zoning violation that was brought to my client's attention at that time. Once again, that same tenant had occupied the property since prior to my client purchasing the property in the fall of 2017. The other exhibits that we've included, Mr. Chairman, are copies of assessors' records, most recent ones, that show the town showing the property, describing the property as a three-family. I could submit earlier records, again, going back to the early 2000s, that also show that the assessors had this property assessed and classified as a three-family. So the, you know, the use has been in existence for some period of time. Lastly, the idea of, you know, would such a use be in keeping with the nature and character of the neighborhood? We've included a list of properties right on Center Avenue, that, as the members are certainly aware, there are several multifamily dwellings throughout, throughout Center Avenue. I think on our list, we, we list about 10 or 12 of them. But, so I think, I think that's consistent with, again, the, the application for the special permit, that such a use as a three-family is consistent with other uses in the neighborhood. So I think, Mr. Chairman, at the end of the day, when you sort of step back, you know, from, from the forest, if you will, it really isn't the, the history of the use of the property that's, that's our question, or that's before this board for its consideration, is, is the conversion from a pre-existing non-conforming two-family to a non-conforming three-family something that would cause readily observable differences in those various characteristics? And once again, I would suggest for the board's consideration that it would not, and that therefore my client should be entitled to the issuance of a special permit. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for him? Nope, I guess, I guess not right now. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please open and identify yourself and let us know what you have to say.
My name is George Hawkins, I live at 17 Lake Street, which is the property right beside, and there's a shared driveway that leads to a barn that faces out toward Center Ave that we live at, and that's part of the reason. Wanted to clarify a few things that were said at the last meeting, near the end, when I couldn't, we were, the meeting was continued. Jan mentioned it, at the day that they found out about the illegal apartment, or that they were, that I said it was a three-family house, and I've never said it was a three-family house, because it was never, there was no permits, there was nothing ever put out about it and stuff like that. And I spent a great deal explaining the history of the house and how it was never legally a three-family house. Obviously, it wasn't zoned, permits were never pulled and approved by building inspector for that basement apartment. During the conversation with Jan, I, we asked why there's some alarms didn't go off. When you go to buy a house, don't you go visit it and check out all the apartments and stuff like that? Why didn't someone notice that there's not two exits to this apartment, that it was an illegal apartment? There was realtors there, I have a friend that came to, he's in real estate, he came for a client of his to look at the house. He came in there, saw the basement apartment, and left right away and told his client he would not recommend it, he would not even go in and deal with him if he was interested in it, because it was an illegal apartment, there was no two exits and stuff like that, so it could not be legal. And he saw that right away, so he just walked away from it. And then there's a few other things that just don't make sense, as far as if you buy a house, doesn't the bank come out and check it out? Doesn't insurance companies come and check these things out, the apartments and the buildings and stuff like that? I don't know the answers to that, but that's what I would think was, you know, part of it. And at the same time, I let her know that we were going to be against going forward with this apartment because of the increased activity as far as parking and things like that. I know they say there's seven parking things, but this is, the rest of the neighborhood is, most of the neighborhood is single-family. I know they talk about the, the multi-dwellings on Center Ave and stuff, but all those were probably built in the early 1900s, and would, I guess you'd call them non-conforming, or whatever you call them, but they were all before this, and they're not newer things as far as I know about. And it's just, the neighborhood is, it's all single families up and down Lake Street just about, and even across the street on Center Ave, there's single-family houses and things like that, so, you know...
I think what the issue they keep forgetting is that...
Do identify yourself too.
My name is Kathy Hawkins. I live at 17 Lake Street. And it's a very unique situation in that the driveway is a shared driveway that goes on into 123. We have lived there for over 40 years, so we know when we bought the house, it was never a three-family house. There was one family who owned it and lived there, and there was one tenant up above. When we bought our house, we were, had some reservations about a two-family sharing the driveway, but we spoke to the tenant, we spoke to the original owners, there never seemed to be a problem. And so we liked living on the pond, so we decided to purchase it. Back in the 1900s, these houses were built, they keep saying that it doesn't impact anybody. Unfortunately, it mostly impacts us. They don't live at the property. And for me, a two-family with someone living there and being upstairs is totally different than a multi-dwelling rental property. And we live on Lake Street. Unfortunately, our house faces, and our mailing address is Lake Street, which is residential. We checked into this before we bought our house, 40 years ago, and it was all single-family thing. Our concern, back in the 1900s, when these houses were built, a lot of households only had one car. Now they possibly can have two and three cars. An example is, their upstairs tenant has a mother, father with a car, and they do have two daughters, I mean, two kids that are 17 and 18. Right now, they don't have their license, but they're going to be getting it soon. If they need to get a job, they can have two more cars. It's not only the parking, it's the activity going in and out. Plus, they don't live there. If there's been, over the years, this place is sold like six times, and we've always been able to manage and work out any issues, but most of the times, they were owner-owned. And we've noticed an increase in the incidents since it's turned over, when the owners do no longer live there and it's just rental property. And I know they said it's a two-family, non-conforming, which from what I understood, mean that it doesn't abide by bylaws now, zoning laws, but because it was built, half the town of Abington was built before those were in. But why would you allow a permit on a two-family that doesn't go by the bylaws, that now you're going to let a three-family go in there? And like I said, they never keep bringing up the issue that this, being a shared driveway, should have some special consideration here. And anytime you have more vehicles, more tenants, we're the ones, we actually really usually have to deal with it. We had, I'm not saying them, we've tried to work very, very carefully with them and stuff, but we warned them that this was not, we've lived there, we know the history of the house. And anytime you have increased tenants, there's increased issues. We had one tenant one time, and they, the tenant parked in our driveway blocking us out when we came home late at night, so we had to park behind him. They came knocking on our door at 5:30 in the morning because he had to go to work. So anytime these kind of situations, I know they personally had a problem with one of their tenants, that the driveway got blocked off a little bit until they got zoned. And then I'm a little confused about the fire safety thing, because I thought you had to have two exits, and I thought that was one of the things that was wrong with it. There's no egress or anything like that, but there's only been one, one exit as far as I know in that building. And they rented this out illegally, and now they're trying to backtrack it and try to, you know, say, well, we want to now change it. And the only reason they're doing it is because they got caught. And I don't have any problems with it, I just, we've lived there for 40 years, we raised our kids there, we bought this house when we were very young, we've invested a lot of time and money into it. I know if that house was listed as a three-family when we bought that house, I would not have bought it, knowing I had to share a driveway with three different families. So I'm assuming when I go to sell my house, that same issue is going to come up. It's going to make it less desirable, our value is going to go down. They have nothing to lose. They don't live there, they don't have to deal with this daily, they don't have to deal with the tenants going in and out. And then I know she got up, and for the most part, we've been able to work stuff out. She got up at the end of the meeting last week and said that guaranteed, you'll never have any trouble with the tenants or the parking. You can't guarantee that. Owners come and go, tenants come and go, you don't know who's going to move in there, who's going to buy the house. And then particularly that, I couldn't believe she got up there and said that. She was talking about how she talked to my husband, she wanted to have a yard sale there, and we said, fine, we were leaving, we have a camper that we have to pull out, just let us out of there. That was in August. That week, five days before the last meeting, in the Columbus Day weekend, she had a yard sale that would have blocked our way. We had been away, but we were on emergency call to come back because we have a daughter that was due to have a baby at any time. We bought text messages from people, we'd lived in the neighborhood. When we were away, we have people check on our house, there was cars parked in our driveway. And if we had tried to pull in the truck with the camper off a busy 123 street and realized that we couldn't even get into our own parking space, and she's trying to assure us that there'll never be a problem with the tenants, I don't really think that showed us much consideration at all. First of all, you know, people are trespassing on our property. And if you don't believe me, I have at least one picture that somebody sent, because she was concerned there were strange cars in our driveway. So it's because of these issues that we are so adamantly for it. And I just feel like, because they did something that wasn't on, wasn't approved properly, obviously, that building was never inspected, it was never zoned, it never passed inspection, so it never could be a three-family. And because that was rented out, I don't feel like now we should have to pay the consequences because it wasn't gone through the proper channel way back when or whenever it got changed. So for these reasons and a bunch of others, you know, there's just little things come up with tenants, and we're not the owners, so we shouldn't have to deal with it. I guess that was basically, we're just hoping that the zoning board will take into consideration, consideration that this would adversely affect us. We don't have a lawyer, we don't owe a lot of the legal terms, all we know is that we were young, we saved up, bought our dream house, have lived there, raised our family. And now we've been taxpaying resident of Abington for over 40 years, and we hope the zoning board is also there to protect our property and our, deny this permit and to protect our home and investment that we have made on this. And I think, like I said, there was a lot of safety things when they bought this house that they either chose to ignore, like, you know, why there wasn't more exits going in, it was a tiny apartment, they knew it was an illegal apartment, they continued to rent it. You know, it didn't affect us directly, but if you're going to make it now with a bigger apartment, which is going to have more people in it, that tiny apartment had two people, and sometimes there was a kid that's locked over there. So you can't control always how many people, and they keep talking about tenants, but tenants and visitors that come, I mean, they rent, they need to have some visitors come over. So for all these reasons, this is why we feel that we don't. And I don't know how that was ever inspected, maybe they got fire permits because of alarms, but I don't see how that building was ever inspected for that basement apartment and proved a fire. I just don't understand how it even gotten, any of this has gotten to this point. But we know the original owner that owned it when we moved in, never had a legal, he was a fireman in town, and I can guarantee you, he did not have apartment that was illegal, but a fire has it down there, so that I can vouch for.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments. Is anyone else who would like to speak on this subject?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of final points. Again, I just would like to reiterate that when my client purchased property in 2017, that unit was occupied. And in fact, the purchase and sales agreement stated that it was a legal three-family. Now, whether that statement's a true statement or not, I'm not, you know, I'm not offering it for that reason. I'm just stating that that unit was occupied. And again, by all the records we've found at the town hall, it goes back to at least, as I said earlier, at least the early 2000s that that unit has been occupied. But once again, I just want to stress, that's not the issue before the board. It's not whether was it a legal three-family, was it a legal two-family. There's no doubt that the use is a non-conforming use. And the bylaw specifically talks about converting one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. The other exhibit that I meant to mention in my introductory remarks that I included is a copy of the floor plan. I think this question came up at the last meeting. This, that, that unit has in fact been vacant since the incident arose in 2000, in January of this year. Since that time, in anticipation of filing our application with the board, we did a couple of things. We retained services of a surveyor who performed a survey, and the survey in fact shows the right-of-way that the abutters have. I've stated at previous meetings, my, my client has no intention of blocking that easement. He hasn't blocked the easement in the four years that he's, that he's owned the property. We'd be more than happy to agree to a condition that signage be placed there, that says, you know, do not block the driveway or something of that nature, to further emphasize the fact that there is a private way to the abutters' property. But the, the floor plans that you have show what would, and they're conceptual plans, but should the board approve the application for the special permit, our next step, as I believe I mentioned at the last meeting in October, would be to apply for a building permit, and it would have to go through all of the procedures of obtaining a building permit, including sign-offs by the various inspectors, plumbing inspector, wiring inspector, fire department, et cetera, to bring the unit up to code. And that's exactly, and really, all we're looking to do is to, if you will, legitimize that third unit. But again, it was occupied when my client purchased it... But again, it was occupied when my client purchased it, occupied by the same tenant that occupied it in January of this year. He has since moved out. And we're before you simply asking for the special permit as provided in the bylaw to convert a two family to a three family, which again, is consistent with the other, many of the other homes in the area. May not be consistent with the abudder's home, we acknowledge that. You know, there are very few neighborhoods that are homogeneous in all single family, all two family, whatever the case may be. Certainly Center Avenue is a mix of uses, we're simply trying to illustrate the fact that there are many multifamilies in that area. So this application is not inconsistent with, with the nature and character of the neighborhood. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the members have any final questions of me or not.
Does anyone have any questions? I, I don't. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Was any, excuse me, would anyone else like to make any comments? If not, we'll close the floor and revert to a discussion by the board about this application. Gentlemen?
All right, so the way I look at this is, we're looking at this building right now as a two family, and we want to convert it to a three family in a R thirty zone. That's the way we have to look at it. So it's a two family, do we want to make it a three family? Plain and simple. What, what the town has done and what whoever has done or all the information we got right here, it's all wrong, because this is not a three family. So everything's wrong. So in other words, the town messed up with this, everyone's messed up with this property. The realtor's messed up with this property. Uh, do jail, you know, when you buy a piece of property, you're supposed to go in, you're supposed to look, make sure everything's correct. Uh, you're supposed to look at the property. And you're supposed, I mean, this has happened before, this has happened before in Quincy, this has happened before in Braintree. This is not a, you know, mysterious thing that happens. But the question is, you have a non-conforming piece of property that many years ago they built a two family on, not a three family, and somebody put another rumor, whether it was an in-law or an apartment that was illegal. And somehow, we don't know where the permits are, it's a big mystery, everything's a big mystery, but someone dropped the ball on this one. So basically, when we look at this property, you're looking at a two family, a non-conforming R thirty. And they're asking for another apartment. So that, that's, that's what you're looking at, plain and simple. Well, all this right here is, you get, all this proof right here, they're showing us the town dropped the ball, and everybody's dropped the ball. Where are the building permits for this? Everything was totally illegal. They want to make it legal, but with a non-conforming building, R thirty, they're not allowed to do it.
Right.
It's up to us to decide if we're gonna let them do it. It's not, it's not our fault, we have to make this vote, I mean, this is, this is what we have to do.
Right.
Someone else dropped the ball on this one. But read it very carefully, it says, "non-conforming." It was built in nineteen hundreds. Someone built an illegal apartment. And on top of that, they're making money out of it. And no one can find building permits, no one can find anything. All right? And this is why we have our zoning officer.
Right. Um, do you think that the, the shared driveway has any bearing on this?
I do, I do personally, because again, it's, it's adding more to the property. I'm looking at it right now as a two family. If you add another one apartment to it, to me, yes, it, it's overbearing, it is. That's the way I look at it. I think this, you know, this is, this is a really big mess.
Right.
Right here. And residential use, R thirty zone, it's a two family right now, that's what it is, no matter what all this paperwork says.
Right.
Do we want to convert it to a three family? That, that's where you're at.
Any other discussion or comments? Uh, do we have any motions about this matter?
You wanna make a motion, anyone make it?
Go right ahead.
All right, so we're gonna make a motion on the petition of Donald Noel, thirty Orchard Lane, Abington, for a finding of a chapter forty-eight, section six, change to a current pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling, section one seventy-five dash seventy-two at seventy-eight Center Street. Uh, the property is located on Accessors Map twenty-three, lot one thirty-eight, in the R thirty zone.
So what's, what's the motion?
Uh, to accept or to...
No, you said, you said, you said accept?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a second?
So we have...
The three of us.
The three of us, um, all in favor? All opposed? Nay?
Nay.
All on yes, all on yes. Well, you, you can't say that you're gonna approve it and then vote it out, so.
I thought we were voting to whether...
We are voting, we are voting, we are voting for it and you, you say either you approve it or you don't approve it, okay? So let's do it over again.
So let's, let's revisit the motion.
Yeah, make the motion over again.
All right. I'm making a motion to not accept the petition of Donald Noel and thirty Orchard Lane, Abington, for a finding of chapter forty-eight, subsection six, change of current pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling, section one seventy-five dash seventy-two at seventy-eight Center Avenue. The property is located on Accessors Map twenty-three, lot one thirty-eight, in the R thirty zone.
Okay, and I will second that.
The motion is to deny the petition, all in favor of denying the petition?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Perfect. All right, that's how, I'm just saying, perfect saying, that's how you do it. I'm just, I'm not saying perfect to your degree, you voted your own, but I'm just saying, that's how we do it. New board, sorry.
Yeah.
Just trying to, just riding through.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right.
I want to thank you too for just mentioning us and asking for a special...
Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item on our agenda is, um, excuse me, is the petition of backyard additional units for Joseph Casey, two oh nine Orchard Lane, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-two dash one for an in-law apartment at twenty, two oh nine Orchard Lane. Property is located on Accessors Map thirty-seven, lot forty-eight, in the R thirty zone. Um, looks like we already have someone who's wanting to speak on this subject.
Yeah, hi, my name's Tim O'Reilly.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to know who's voting on this. Either me or Bob.
Okay, um, Bob, would you like to take this one to vote on?
I'd be happy to.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Please repeat yourself, I'm sorry.
My name's Tim O'Reilly, I'm representing backyard ADUs and our client here, Joseph Casey, who lives at two oh nine Orchard Lane here in Abington. Um, so the Casey family approached us, they're looking for a solution for their elderly mother, somewhere where she can be close to her family and they can provide care for her. They looked around in the community and didn't see any options that worked for them. Um, so they approached us, we did a site review with them and reviewed the zoning bylaw. We found section one seventy-five dash thirty-two subsection I, which is all about accessory apartments for grandparents, parents, and children. So that is how we're, we're approaching this project. We have our site plan here, we submitted an original with our application and an updated one. I'm here showing the updated version. That shows a little deck extension here. Just wanna make sure the board has that, that one to reference. Um, so I'll, I'll start at the street and we'll work our way through, I'll, I'll talk you through our plan here. Um, so to start off, the existing single-family home here, there's a large driveway and a two-car garage, which is gonna provide ample parking for the existing single-family home as well as the accessory apartment. The square footage we're proposing for our accessory apartment, I apologize, in our application, we listed four seventy-five and four seventy. The correct square footage is four seventy-two and a half. So that was a rounding error, one rounded up, one rounded down. But the square footage for this accessory apartment will be four hundred and seventy-two and a half square feet. How we propose it here is behind the single-family home, it'll, it'll be attached via a shared deck to the main house. This way, the property owner's mother will be, be close, but not too close, and they'll still be able to, to commune, and they'll have this lovely pool in the summer. Um, awesome. Uh, part of the, the reason we chose this location as well as that deck attachment is cost and making this an affordable option. We were worried that if this was attached to the main house, we'd have to start to deal with removing windows, siding, you know, matching roof lines. And so this option still allows that attachment via the deck without any overbearing costs associated with attaching those structures. So access to the site for the build here, we chose this location as well because it's super simple to access for construction. And then in the future, thinking about egresses, there'll be a lovely egress here around to the front of the house. Uh, our survey was done by Alpha Survey, they did note some, some wetland-like conditions in the back of the lot here. Uh, we confirmed that with our site visit, and so we got in touch with the Conservation Commission in town, and their guidance to us was not, that we did not need to worry about it, and we were not...
Meaning if you're far enough away?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, and we didn't need to file any additional paperwork with the Conservation Commission. Um, the foundation for this structure is a shallow frost-protected foundation. This utilizes ICF blocks, eighteen-inch rows, along with some horizontal insulation. Again, this goes back to cost savings, we don't need a full basement here. Um, it's gonna have minimal, minimal impact on the site compared to digging out a full basement. Um, yeah. And so, uh, thinking about the impact to the site here, it's a relatively small structure. And again, we're not gonna be doing a lot of digging because of that shallow frost-protected foundation. Uh, the unit will be heated and cooled with a mini split, which I'm sure you're seeing more and more these days. Outside, there is a small compressor unit that's not very loud. It'll be located to the back of the unit here. Um, that's to be out of the sight of the homeowner, whoever's, Joe's mother who's living in the unit, and as well to the neighbors. Um, there'll be no sidelines to see that compressor. It's only about five feet, five, three feet at the back of the unit. Uh, utilities here are very important. We'll be connecting an underground trench into the, the existing single-family basement. Um, right, right around, you'll see the bulkhead area here, this is where the sewer stack is. So we'll connect our sewer to the main house's sewer. And then in the front of the basement, there's a utility closet with electrical and water. Uh, we'll run our lines and connect there. All that work will be done, you know, by licensed professionals and overseen by the building department. Awesome. We'll go to the next one here. We'll look at the floor plans, if I don't have this over. Great. So here's our unit here, again, um, it's for, for, for one, one woman living here. Um, under that section one seventy-five dash thirty-two I, um, it's very explicit that no more than two people can live here. So, um, as it's proposed, only one person will live here, but it is a one-bedroom unit, and it really cannot accommodate more than, than two people. Um, we have a very simple floor plan here, uh, one bedroom, one bathroom, uh, a small kitchen space as well as living space. This sliding door will be the main entrance here to that shared deck, so they can access between, um, the main house and the ADU. And, um, you know, per code, as we know here, we need two egresses, so we have our second egress here to the deck extension where you can then exit around the side of the house. Thinking about, uh, the space itself and impact of the neighbors, there's very few windows along this side where the neighbors are over here. The family's aware that this must be, uh, family occupied. Um, they're aware that they need to file a declaration with the covenant, of covenants with the registry, um, as well as if the primary dwelling, two oh nine Orchard Lane, is sold, that the special permit will be null and they'll have to, the next owner will have to reapply for the special permit. Um, our home here is built to meet and exceed Mass Energy Stretch Code. Um, yes, so it's very well insulated. Um, yep, the primary door, the secondary door, we went over those. Um, yeah, and we also, you know, just in our design, had wider hallways, wider doorways to know that as Joe's mother ages in place here, that this will be a unit that can accommodate her. Had the elevations as well, just go over these briefly, just how this unit would look. Um, so we have our shallow frost-protected foundation, minimal excavation here. Um, this will be the view that the neighbor will have. Um, it's important to mention through this process, in addition to sending out all the required letters to abudders, um, Joe has been talking to his neighbors, telling them about this project, they're very aware of it and, and support it. This will be the view, the pool's here, so she'll have lovely views. Um, this is that, that entryway onto the shared deck. And finally, I have elevations from the front and back. So from the rear of the property, looking at this accessory apartment, um, this will be that bedroom window, the compressor is not shown, but it'll go up here. And we can see here why we wanted this to be detached. Uh, there is several, there's windows here as well as windows on the second story, so attaching these two units, excuse me. Uh, that's good, I got it. Thank you. Uh, attaching this unit really would present a cost hardship.
It kinda looks like in the picture there, though it is attached.
Uh, that, that's an incorrect photo, I apologize. We, we went through several design iterations here. Um, you know, should we attach, should we not attach? Um, and again, the, the purpose of this unit is to be that accessory partner for the grandmother. And so we want to do this in a cost-effective manner. So that's why we've modified our plans to have that shared deck, um, so that, again, this can be a space that someone can live in comfortably, where their family can still check in on them, provide care as needed. So from the street, um, this would be that view, the main house is in here, and that's what we'll see. The primary goal here for, for the mother was to have a view of the street, to make her not feel like she's trapped in the backyard. Um, so we went, again, going through several design iterations, we've gone with a door here so she'll still be able to see the street, see the front. Um, I, I believe that's, that's all I have for you guys today, and I'd love to hear your feedback and get your questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Graham?
Joe, is that taking up the ice rink?
Is it back?
Is it taking up the ice rink?
No, you have the ice rinks, go ahead.
It's gone?
Yeah.
See, uh, the problem we do have is that, that it's supposed to be attached. Let's just, the bylaw says, when it comes to in-laws and stuff like that, you can't have two separate buildings on, on, on the property. So, I mean, when I look at that picture, I'm looking, hey, that looks pretty good with it attached like that. And that's one of the things that the building inspector is saying that, you know, there's an issue with. That this, this building really should be attached to the other building. That way there, there is no question, there's not two buildings on one piece of property.
Two occupied dwellings, right?
What's that?
Can't be two occupied dwellings.
Right, exactly, but they're separate, they're not, it's not connected. So, I'm just bringing that up, that's one of the things that they brought up. Besides that, I think it's a, that's, it's a great idea, and, I mean, uh, I can, I can tell you right now, back in the day, and I've seen some of them, and you've probably seen that house too. I, I think it's on Rockland Street where they built like a little bridge going to the garage.
Yeah.
And, and, and that was for an in-law.
Like a breezeway?
Yeah, no, like a bridge, and you see it, it's, it's very bizarre, because he used to push the issue.
I was gonna ask that, like...
Yeah, yeah. No, I... Sir, could you come up and identify, so just for...
Sure, I'm Joe Casey, two zero nine, what's your name?
Thank you. Good call, good call. Go ahead, go ahead. There you go.
Not attaching it to the house would save two of my windows.
Yeah.
And like you said, the roof line, it would save a bit of a cost too. And if there was, if attaching to the deck doesn't, isn't considered attaching to the house.
No.
How about like a, a roof? Would that be like, it's almost like that?
I think the building inspector would have to look at it and approve it.
It's like a covered thing, so if she came...
Because, I mean, that's one of the main things that she brought up, right?
Right. It's under our, it's under our one seventy-five dash fourteen, it clearly states in our, in that subsection that there's only one, one standardized building can be on the, on the lot itself, and having an independent second building is simply just not allowed in our by, in our zoning bylaws. So, which is, we encourage, and I believe... So, which is, we encourage, and I believe it's been since I've been on the board, the policy that any attached dwelling, any dwelling for a fellow member or family member is attached to the main dwelling in some way, shape, or form, physically to the building itself.
In this subsection I of 175 dash three-two, it doesn't explicitly say detached or not?
No, but that's.
That is how, that is how she.
She took it from, I included in her, in her thing, the zoning bylaws, 175 thirty-two dash I, in fine, the petition is not meeting the criteria of the bullet points five and seven. When you roll that over, it, it leads to 175 dash fourteen, which clearly states that we're not allowing two independent structures on one lot.
Because we don't want that to the whole town. I mean, you don't want to have two structures on each lot.
So I, I, I would encourage you to work with the building inspector's decision process here about whatever kind of coverage you want to do for that deck to kind of make a consolidation to that building. Before, before you, before you get struck down and say no, I, I would think it'd be well worth the effort of having another discussion with, with the building inspector's office and just simply discuss what you just mentioned. How about if I put a permanent roof line over the, from my house to that deck into that, into that second egress? Would that adequately say it's connected to the house now, therefore not having a second dwelling, therefore no violation under, under 175 fourteen? And therefore, it's a standard normal in-law apartment and as long as you file the annual report with the town in, there's no issue.
Well, yeah, you still have to come back for a special permit though. So just keep that in mind, you still need a special permit for that.
Right. So the recommendation of the board is to continue a conversation with the building inspector?
Because we don't, you know, because we're looking at what she wrote, we can understand what she wrote because, like you said, on each, you don't want to have a bunch of homes with two buildings on them. And that, and once you start doing that, that's when you have the problems.
Right, we don't want to set precedent for something.
Right, and this is, this is a good-looking project though. I mean, I like that right there, attached.
That, that one, that, we all, all said the same thing. It's attached to the house, what's the problem?
She brought that in front of us, boom, no problem.
What do you want to do?
Well, again, I just reiterate that the scope of the project here, doing an attachment like that involves, you know, ripping out windows, so significant modifications of that existing single-family home, which, yeah, just thinking about cost and.
But what you're getting out of it is, is what you want it though. You want that, that nice, nice, what do you have, one level?
Three feet.
Yeah, well, you have the one-level rooms for her and landings for her, that's, it's going to be perfect, but.
Yeah.
We, we can't, we gotta go by what you're saying and it's, and, and you know the reason why, I already explained to you, because we don't want them all over town with two buildings. I mean, this is great.
I, I, I would urge you, the allow us to continue and have a discussion with the building inspector on, on the potential of what you just mentioned, like putting a, putting a roof, permanent roof structure from your house to the, over the deck to the house to make a sort of, sort of quasi.
See if that, if that works.
See if that works for them to say that it, it now takes away from the secondary structure or the secondary element that's there right now with the three-foot distance between the two structures. If that connect, that permanent connection was wide enough, long enough, big enough to meet, meet her criteria, I would then say it's one structure without changing anything that he's designed except to add that permanent roof. I, I, it's worth the discussion and come back rather than us voting you down and saying no.
Well, it's just that, it's just that, again, we don't want that. It's a great idea, beautiful, love it, but we can't have the different structures.
Excuse me, to overstay. One of the problems. Well, yeah, we, we would request a continuation and we'll, we'll have those conversations and come back and.
Is there any other further comments from either you two or anyone else?
Then we, then we, then we begin.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any further comments from you guys or anyone else?
I don't.
Remember brought the water too, though. We're not doing any hookups, the town's not doing any hookups, right?
This would be a hookup to the existing.
To the existing?
Yes.
Back there, right?
Yep.
Okay, so let's close the floor for public discussion and turn it over to the board. Sounds like we're ready for a motion.
You want to continue, right?
Right.
Yes.
Do you want to continue to next month or January?
Uh, when's your meeting next month?
The ninth. Then, I think.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Or no, no.
The ninth of December?
And then, again, talk to the building inspector and see what.
This could be a, yeah, it could be a, a one, one-hour explanation and a, a redraft of a plan that just adds a permanent roof structure from the main home to the secondary dwelling, connecting the two to make it one dwelling, and you're done. Or it's going to be something more, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because it's up to the, it's the building inspection department's decision to make how they want to accept that addition and how it's framed and structured. So it comes down to framing structure, I think personally, so. You may be able to pull it off with just that structure. I don't know, but I'm not, I'm not promising anything, but I think it's worthy of seeking that guidance before you.
The deck isn't going to do it. I don't think, the deck is not going to do it, so.
Okay. Now, let me ask you a question. I'm glad we wait yet for them. But that, if it doesn't go through, that looks acceptable to the house.
Because that's.
Technically.
If you look at that picture, it's attached to the house.
Yeah.
If you structurally attach it to the house, there's no question in mind at all. That's, that's just an in-law suite, as long as you file.
It's something we haven't seen before, so.
Let me clarify.
Right.
It is her opinion that the petition needs to resubmit a, a different architectural or a different plot plan to meet the accessory apartment conditions. However, assuming that all other criteria is met, this would be a normal acceptable project. So it doesn't sound like it's, I just think you need to have that discussion.
Right.
Have the conversation.
Yeah, and I just think, and I think that could be as, maybe as simple as, what if we did this? And she said, well, if you did this plus that, yes, we'll go with that. Or maybe you'd have to sacrifice the two windows or, or one of the two windows to make it a, a, a piece of an attachment.
Yeah, like an attached breezeway.
Yeah, just something that makes it one structure, not two structure.
Thank you.
All right, so we're all set on?
All right, and who's going to vote between you two on this one?
He was going to go.
I'm going to go. So I thought, I just want to make sure real quick. Do I have a motion on this matter?
I, I, I would motion a continuance be issued for this. Did you want to go December ninth?
Yes, please.
To December ninth for seeking guidance from the building department's approval of a potential settlement to the current issue with the property.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Continuing until December ninth. Thank you very much.
All right. Sounds good. All right, we'll see you.
Appreciate your time.
All right.
It's a good, it's a good plan.
It really does look nice.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ken.
The, the next item on our agenda is regarding 46 Daniel Drive. Is there anyone here to represent that project or want to talk about it? The, the petition is of Patrick Sullivan, 46 Daniel Drive, Abington for a sideyard variance under 175 twenty-nine for construction of an addition at 46 Daniel Drive. The property is located on Assessor's Map twenty-one, lot forty-one, in the R forty zone. And please identify yourself and let us know what you have to say.
Hi, I'm Mike Gembry. I'm the potential contractor for the job. Yeah, he just wants to add a two-car garage and I think he short a couple feet and. Why are we here?
Took some notes on this though.
Another weird-looking prepiece of property, huh? He wants, he wants to go off the side, is that what he's talking about?
Yes, sir. Yep, up the left-hand side of the house.
Yeah, and the house is, is quite crooked, is it not? Unless, you know, it looks like.
There's an angle.
Yeah, there's an angle too.
I guess in most.
Little over one-foot angle from front to rear, left to right.
And what are you missing by? What are you missing by?
A hair.
I mean, right there, that's nonconforming. Look at the building, if you would look at that, yeah.
Why was it be nonconforming?
Because the, the building itself, see how the, see how the property is, is, is.
It's fifty-seven on the left-hand side and fifty-two on the right-hand side, frontage?
Right.
So when they built the house, it's, it's nonconforming, it's, it's crooked, all right?
If it was straight, structured on the side of the lot, we wouldn't be talking about this.
Okay, I see what you mean. All right. So this is basically just a variance for the, the setback on the front?
For the side.
Take the side, the side.
We don't give out variances, just so you know, we're really strict on that, but if this is a true, it stands, the house is crooked and all the lot, so it's nonconforming. When you say that?
It sounds, it, it is, number one, it's crooked on the property, number one. There's no doubt about it.
That's where, that's where you have the problem.
The side. And the side is, is, is short.
Yep.
So, but i- if you look at the image on the picture, it's, it's, it's a small shortage of, of the issue.
One problem I do have is you're not showing the picture of the project. The, the actual height, the actual, the height, the, how many cars, cars have been impacted?
I thought that was back then with the.
Am I mistaken? Is there something in there?
I don't see that.
Did you guys get a picture of the height and?
No, no.
The, all, all we've received was a plot, a plot. We didn't receive anything.
An image of what the building was.
I thought that the survey had marked in where the garage is going.
Well, but we need to see what the garage is going to look like.
Oh.
Before we approve something, we'd like to see what it's going to look like.
We're trying to make sure it fits in with the neighborhood?
Right, exactly.
It's basically because of that architectural style. What we normally would, would see with this is not only the plot plan that shows the problem and why we have a problem, but what you're potentially planning to build. So structurally, is it a two-car garage? Is it a center, is it a center column with two separate doors, one double door? Is it, is a secondary roof? What is the roof height association with the height of the house? Is it greater or lesser, depth perception, deep? We just want to see a picture of what you're proposing to build.
Yeah.
Well, that makes perfect sense, but I, I really thought they already had it here with it.
I, I, I don't see it.
I didn't get it.
Is that another one? Oh, okay.
Those the plans themselves for the new addition?
That's the, that's the floor plan. There's not a, there's not a elevation on there. That's it, unless that one, that's the same one, yeah. This is the floor plan, there's no, like elevation. This says what the size of the garage door is. There's not a, an elevation on here.
Yeah, we, we'd have to see, we'd have to see how high it's going to be looking. We want to see what it's going to look like with the old structure next to it. In other words, a vision of it. Do you know what I'm talking about? I mean, he's a fine, but we still need to know the height of the building and what, what the building's going to look like when it, when it's done.
So basically, you need the full set of plans with it attached to the house.
Yes, yes. Because we don't want to approve something that we haven't seen. That's how we usually go with this board, that when they're going to build a two-car garage or a one-car garage, and we like to see what it's going to look like before we approve it. Instead of just seeing this in, in the floor plans, we like to see the height and what, how the house is going to look when it's done.
I see. You did get a set of plans, but it just doesn't show the whole picture.
Can I take one good look at it?
It shows one single garage door, but it, you know, there's, there's no elevations with that, at least what we got.
I think we all agree that, that the house is crooked, so, so we have what? A two-car garage.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Two-car garage. And it's, it's not larger than the house because you have the family room, that's correct.
Right.
You see square footage.
I got, was submitted, we're seeing the structure to the primary building, seeing the height, roof of the height being lower than the primary roof. It's just, it's just a fundamental picture of what the final plan is going to look like.
Is there living space above the garage?
It's going to be storage.
We get a, we get a, normally we get a rough, a draft of, of the actual physical building, like the slab boards or it's going to be vinyl siding and what kind of structural windows?
It's going to be vinyl siding.
Yeah.
We put an addition on the back of the house about seven, eight years ago.
Okay.
I think, is that what you have there now?
I don't know, could you show me this? Could you, could you take a look at this? I'm just a little confused about the bathroom, the master bathroom and.
Yeah, he was just doing it for storage now, but for future down the road, they just grew that in.
Oh, did they, did they put a master bathroom up here?
This is all, yeah, but I mean.
There's going to be a bedroom up here, it says.
Yeah, but they were just doing it for storage right now.
I mean, what, what, if we approve it, we're approving to be built.
Right.
But we're not approving, we're not approving that.
No.
Something the builders got.
No, that's right, but you just, that was for future consideration down the road when he did the drawings.
Okay.
But the two-car garage is here.
Okay.
It's going to be for storage now upstairs.
Well, we want to see something that, that's going to show what it's going to look like up against the house and we like to drive by and take a look at the house and, and the neighborhood, make sure it's not overbearing for the, for the neighborhood.
All right, so you need just like a, a full drawing.
Right, the elevations, the, the, what it's going to look like from the outside, you know, the heights and the design.
Right.
Look at them, all right?
I thought they had all that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Would, would you be agreeable to a continuance so you can provide those drawings?
Absolutely.
Would you like it to be until December ninth?
I think that'd be great.
Well, how does, what does that December ninth look like?
I would suggest doing January thirteenth.
I can't hear you, what?
January, she's suggesting January thirteenth because December ninth is really busy already.
That's what I have.
Oh, I wish you had picked it out, that would have helped.
Can we move it to January because I guess next month is January? Does that work for you? Or do you want it, do you need to do it next, next month?
I'd like to do it as soon as possible, but I don't know.
Well, I think we should put it on for the, well, Mr. Chairman, it's up to you on.
Okay, well, we're, we're agreeable to a continuance, we can discuss when to make it, I guess. Is there any other comments from the public about this project? I'll close the floor for that and our discussion should be about how long to continue it.
I, 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 if, I understand December's going to be.
So this is it so far?
I know, but if December's going to be busy or, or thick, I still think we have, we, we have a regular room to do this one, it's just going to have to be added to the, to the list for that night, so.
How many you got so far?
Five.
Uh, about six.
Oh, six with the last one.
This would be six?
Six, six last one.
This would be seven.
This one would be seven.
I think this is a.
Yeah, I, I think those two, we just added though, um. Well, I shouldn't say quick, but I think we're being reasonable, so. Yeah.
I think we should add it till December ninth then?
Yeah, I think so.
Because this doesn't look like this is going to be a.
It looks like it's going to be a long night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right?
I'll bring the yield chair. I'll, I'll have eggplant for him.
Do I, do I have a motion for the continuance?
I, I would make motion, uh, for the, uh, petition, um, of Patrick Sullivan, uh, is it forty-six Daniel Drive?
Was there anything else on this property that's?
No, it's pretty, she's.
Oh, she was pretty, she's pretty good with that.
So the petition of, uh, Patrick Sullivan, forty-six, uh, Daniel Drive in Abington for a side yard variance for under section one seventy-five twenty-nine, construction of additional addition at forty-six, uh, Daniel Drive, be continued through December ninth, um, to receive additional plot plan information. So we have the right to make the correct decisions.
Sounds like a plan.
You had a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor of, uh, the continuance to December ninth?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm not, I'm not doing this on purpose. I just want to make sure that we, you know, just have the right look to the house.
Right. Oh, yeah, but, yeah, I agree. Okay, the, the next item on our agenda.
They're all set, John. They're all set for December ninth.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Oh, could you just, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The, uh, the next item on our agenda has to do with seventy-five Nile Street. The addition of Fred Buds, seventy-five Nile Street in Abington for a frontage setback variance under one seventy-five twenty-nine for construction of a twenty-eight by twenty-eight barn, eight point two feet from the front property line at seventy-five Nile Street. Property is located on Assessor's Map forty-three, lot eighty-eight, in the R thirty zone. Uh, is anyone here to talk about that project?
We need someone to represent though.
All right.
Someone needs to represent the.
The petition.
Yeah. Just come up and identify yourself and let us, let us know what you have to say.
Hello, I'm Fred Buds, owner of seventy-five Niles. Just here to listen in and see if we can figure something out, you know? Uh, I know, uh, once you read that, eight point two is very alarming, but it's actually five, fifteen feet point two inches from the street. Um, just to give you an accurate photo. Um, another interesting fact on the property, just make you aware of, there is a twenty-four yard sewer easement on that property as well, so I ju- I just wanted to throw that in and introduce myself.
Okay, um, does anyone have any questions or?
Which one is this again?
Uh, seventy-five Nile Street.
Yep. So, what is the, um, R? You said fifteen feet from the street. That would include like a sidewalk or something?
That would be included with it, yeah. It's more of an extension of the street. It's all paved asphalt.
Right.
No curving.
Do you have, uh, do you have plans for this or?
Oh, yeah. I made sure everything's in that folder.
There's a, there's a plot plan. Is there like a elevation I don't, I don't see.
There's a, I've submitted two full plans. It should be eight and a half by eleven, then there should be a bigger one.
Check that out. Now, that's the, that's a site. Yep. And this?
Yeah.
That might be, uh, they only petitioned this. So is this it?
That's this one.
He's only got that.
Pass that on. And the, the reason that the, the building would be that, you want that building that close as for that sewer easement? You don't want interference?
Yeah, this, this couple, uh, with the, the side variance and the rear, rear ridge, um, that's the only thing that would be, um, not aggressive with my neighbors, you know what I mean?
Then we have to bring ten feet, this is supposed to be, this is supposed to be thirty-five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, just again, uh, to include, uh, comments from our zoning enforcement and the planning board. The, when the denial letter was issued, uh, there were two sections, uh, set on that denial, um.
Correct. It was just the original plan showed nine feet from the house. It had to be ten feet from the house. We have more than enough room to work with that with the sewer easement. We don't have the frontage.
So, all, all, all I'm pointing out, Mr. Chairman, is that on the denial letter, it's pointed out that one seventy-five twenty-nine, which was the front setback proposal piece argument, and then one twenty-six, which is no closer than ten feet from the principal building and confinement with the front yard request. Our zoning enforcement official says that the zoning bylaw one seventy-five requires relief but cannot be entertained because the board, to the board because it was not on the public hearing notice itself. They only cite, cite on the public hearing notice, one seventy-five twenty-nine. So although there were two denial points when the application was received, only one seventy-five twenty-six was mentioned on the public notice. So according to our rules, we can't entertain the required relief because it was not on the public hearing notice.
And the other thing is, we should have got these with our pack, because we should have had two weeks to look at these all.
We would have visited the property too.
Yeah.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Because, um, that's an issue. I mean, I mean, I'd like to look at this for more than, than five seconds.
What is the reason that the barn would need to be close to the road as apart, as opposed to further back on the property?
The rear ridge. It's thirty feet from the back, um, so without, again, opposing any of my name is, that's the closest we worked. That would be the frontage towards the street where it's not bothering anybody. Especially across the street, it's, I believe it's conservation. I don't know what it, wetlands. I don't know what it's labeled. So there's, there's nothing going on there too. I mean, it's just storage.
It's bordering vegetable, oh, vegetable, yeah, vegetation wetlands.
Can I see that real quick?
Oh.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm.
You wanna see it too?
No, no, we, um, so that was, that was from the builder submitted. It was in the file. I asked, we used it just so you guys have a better vision of everything.
Uh-huh. So, so where, where's this going? Cause if I'm looking at this one.
Right here.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
There should be a plot plan in here.
Yeah, but I mean, but when we get them, I mean, they, you have to be bigger than this. I mean, so we can actually. So, an attached, an attached bar.
No, detached.
This is detached.
Detached bar, detached bar, detached building. Now, don't we just go over this? Detached two dwellings?
Well, well, it, it, this one wouldn't be occupied though.
It's not a dwelling. It's a commercial operation.
This is gonna be what?
Not a dwelling. The barn, storage.
Storage?
Yeah.
Commercial?
No one's living in it.
No?
I'm a hobbyist. I like to build boats and every, you know what I mean?
Okay, okay, all right.
Lot of guy stuff, me in town, you know, I got a little collectible, you know, just fill it up, right?
Yep. I can see it now, yeah, I understand. Okay, so storage, all right.
Mm-hmm.
And would it be considered a two-car type of thing or?
No, it's only a twelve-foot opening, yeah.
Okay, I see right there, yep. So what problems do we have with the, with the?
The applicant only filed under the zoning bylaw of one seventy-five twenty-nine, but not under the zoning bylaw of one seventy-five twenty-six. Both of these zoning bylaws sections were quoted in the denial letter, so why was one seventy-five twenty-six not addressed in the petition's application? The final point was zoning by, uh, zoning bylaw one seventy-five twenty-six requires relief but cannot be entertained by the board because it was not on the public hearing notice. So the, the denial letter cited both twenty-six and twenty-nine. The applicant, on the application, we only have twenty-six and not twenty-nine.
Yeah, twenty-nine rather than.
I mean, twenty-nine and not twenty-six. And twenty-six is where he needs to find relief for him to get granted. And we can't entertain that because it wasn't on the public hearing.
Right, okay, um.
Hate to do it.
Do we have any more?
Continuance to do it. I don't, I don't want to do this.
Do you have, do you have any more questions for Mr.?
Yeah, I think that, uh, we should be getting one of these right here with your proposal here.
But, when do we see?
We need actually to see it.
A full-size one?
Yeah, yeah.
I can print it out. It's not gonna have pretty colors on it, but.
I don't need pretty colors. I just need a black and white picture of what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, we need to.
I can get you bigger than eight and a half by eleven. That's, that's all.
We need to see, we need to see the, this, like, this size, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause this is the project you're doing, not this one. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
All right. We'd like to see what the structure's gonna look like, like how it's gonna be framed, what, you know, the outside siding.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
Those are there, those are there, but still, we need, we need to, I need a magnifying glass to see this, so if you could get it, you know, good size that we could.
That's very doable. If that was made known to me, I would have made sure you had that today, you know?
Do you think you should refile? I mean, I mean, she's saying, um, she's saying any doubts.
Yeah, that's, it seems like to me, but, um, we should also see if there's any other comments from the public before we just discuss that too.
No, we're not giving vote on this. Uh, we can't vote on it.
No.
I mean, that's what you're saying, so, um. She's, has she explained to you what needs to be done?
I mean, I think I.
You got the letter, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just the, the two stipulations. I, one wasn't an issue, but I guess I failed to mention that.
Yeah.
You know, by hearing or whatever, so I guess.
So this.
What happens now? Recirculate with the paper or, I mean?
Well, we're gonna have to continue it then for that.
Well, the, well, this guy had to refile.
Right.
So that's gonna be on your, um, um, get the information from what exactly he needs to refile. I mean, it's right there in front of us, but, um, maybe you could help him out and.
Sounds like I just need to rewrite the application with both of those.
But you might have to repost everything and everything. That's what you're gonna talk to the.
Yeah, okay.
You gotta talk, I hate to do it, but I, I'm not even sure if we can get you in for next month.
I guess I can wait till January.
Well, that would give you time, that would time to publish it.
I appreciate your time and everything too, but.
But that's gonna time to publish it.
I'm in no rush, you know what I mean?
Okay, okay, but that's gonna give you time to get this published and get it out in the public, so there's no questions asked.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
If anybody, any others want to make up on January.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, uh, other than that, that's the only reason I can't, we can't do anything to.
I completely understand.
I apologize, but that just.
But again, if we just have.
I wish it was my intention when I was submitting it.
I wish it was too.
I, I had, you know, I had asked them to review that after reviewing all the paperwork that was given back to me. That was failed to be mentioned on behalf, just, you know.
All right, so again, it's, 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 it's best that we catch it now though?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the date in January?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Um, one other thing is, if we're gonna, are we asking for a continuance for allowing time to refile?
Well, he has to refile, so when he's done refiling, that's when he will, we will get him on, we will get him on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Okay. So we can't really give him a date for that. It depends if.
Depends on when he files.
Yeah, just refile.
Yeah, hopefully it's.
We don't, I guess my, my point of order is, do we need to take any comments from other people in the public when we?
No, because we can't even vote on it. We can't even vote on this, so there's no sense in, cause he has to refile it. It's a null and void really, when you think about it, cause we can't give him a December.
Where we need relief, we can't talk about, so.
Right, yeah.
Right.
We can't make a decision on it, so.
The sooner you file, the sooner you file, the sooner we can see you again.
Yeah.
You can hold off on a little bit.
Hold off on his first second. I'd do it, I'd do it midnight today if you could.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He'll probably be back in December, so.
All right.
All right.
Uh, thank you for your time, gentlemen. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Be good. Good luck. Have a good one.
Okay.
And please reach out to the board if you need, have any questions, all right?
Thank you very much.
Please call.
I don't even think we have to vote on that, cause it'd be basically, it's just a, it's just a, a non-vote.
Right.
Completely, so.
Where's the deferral pending or refiling?
Yeah, after, yeah, after his, um, refile.
He needs to refile his application.
Yep.
To meet the requirements for us to frame.
Okay. The next item we have is a petition from David Cologne. Two sixteen Peregrine Road, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-two dash one to create an in-law apartment in a side yard variance under one seventy-five twenty-nine for two sixteen Peregrine Road. Property is located on Assessor's Map eighteen, lot seventy-seven, in the R thirty zone. Please let us know who you are and, uh, what you have to say.
Sure. Uh, my name is David Cologne, and so, um, standing here in front with, uh, just to show you, uh, requesting for, uh, two things. One is for the, uh, one seventy-five dash thirty-two for, uh, the in-law, uh, suite, uh, attached to the house. Uh, second one is, uh, for the one seventy-five dash twenty-nine, uh, for variance, uh, requesting a variance for zoning, uh, for the side of the house. Uh, on one of the, the sheets there provided by the, uh, assessor, um, you can see it. He assessed at forty-four feet, uh, from the house to the, uh, neighbors or to the divides. With the, uh, addition being thirty by thirty, it overrides, uh, about, I believe is, what it was, thirty by thirty, it overrides about, um, fourteen, leaving fourteen feet, so it overrides about six feet over, um, the property, which is why I'm requesting, uh, variance. I went through with the plans and with the architect and all, uh, with my neighbor who is adjacent to that side, um, which also included a letter, an email that should be attached, um, to the thing, uh, saying that, you know, they're, they're, you know, get along great, everything is great, and, uh, he, he's, he encourages it. So, uh, we're hoping that, uh, that that helps too. On the other sheets, uh, we have actual three-D picture provided from the architect, um, on what we have in mind, uh, what the design will look. And, and it'll be the same style as the house, same style as siding, uh, roofing, everything stays exactly the same. Uh, towards the front of the house, we don't need to claim anything. Everything has enough storage, uh, feet from the entrance, um, and that's about it. That's all we have. Um, we understand that it's not gonna be rented, that it's never gonna be rented. Uh, we moved in about six years, uh, ago. We love it. We don't plan to go anywhere, so we're not, there's no plans of selling. Uh, the reason for the addition is, uh, so we have a, a three-year-old that has, um, she's autistic, and so my in-laws, my wife's parents help, help us a lot out. Uh, so with this addition, they can be their twenty-four hours a day assistants, since me and my wife, my wife both work.
Mm-hmm.
Full-time jobs and so on.
Um, one of the things noted by our, our zoning enforcement officer was that, uh, for structures that are over eight hundred seventy-five square feet, they have to get a special permit, which was not part of the application. His use is nine hundred square feet.
Okay.
So, um, what, what can we do about that, if anything? Or is this gonna be another, we have to defer it? As, as proposed, we can't really approve it because of.
Is that what she's saying?
Well, that's why, that's why I read it.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me just, let me, once again, go ahead, shoot me, please. Upon, upon the review, uh, filing accordingly, however, there was a major issue with the filing. Upon review, the petition did not follow the zoning bylaw of one seventy-five twenty-six dash C, see the attached accessory, use and accessory building. The proposal for the nine hundred square foot accessory apartment making the garage nine hundred square feet, any, um, accessory structure exceeding eight seventy-five square feet require a special permit, uh, by the zoning committee. Uh, the zoning bylaw one seventy twenty-six requires a special permit but cannot be entertained, once again, because it was not on the public hearing. So really, it's a, it's a resubmit with the appropriate, um, section and section. And again, we have to, once that's entertained, it, it, it requires a, um.
Special permit.
A special permit in order to get the square footage approved.
What did you ask for? You asked for?
One seventy-five dash thirty-two I, which was for the in-law suite.
For the in-law.
He asked for nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
And then it has to be.
One seventy-five point two-nine. Uh, we needed one.
And now, did the architect instruct that it was gonna be nine hundred feet? Um, because to my knowledge, it has to be, um, less.
This is a percentage.
Yeah, half of the property, which is eighteen hundred feet, or a little over eighteen now.
So it's saying that. It says that the garage is nine hundred square feet.
That's what it says.
And we have to stay under eight seventy.
Seventy-five.
To not require a special permit.
Correct. I don't know what that means to the plan, but.
Yeah.
So either they have to make it a little bit smaller, or they have to apply, apply for a special permit, right?
That's my understanding of what's been explained to us.
Right, that's what I got from that.
Zoning enforcement.
But we would have to see the plans of it, um.
Put a smaller building if they want to change it.
Yeah, so if it, if you just cut a foot off.
You might not even need a variance if you do that. I'm just, if you make it small.
But you know what it costs?
So initially, we tried, um, uh, the, the plans were all twenty-six by twenty-six.
Yeah.
With, um, the child having autism or whatever. Who knows how it's gonna go down the road? So in the plans, they created a set of stairways that, uh, that's inside, located inside the garage, going in towards left the house.
Right.
The addition, uh, the in-law suite. With the plans, um, the architect widened them enough to put a, a lift chair.
Okay, okay.
So that was the plan.
And that could be something that could be used later on too.
Yeah, and that's how, exactly, exactly, cause we don't.
If you sell the house, it could be used for the next people coming in with in-laws.
Mm-hmm.
So I can understand that.
And that's how we ended up exceeding, um, the line and so on.
All we're saying, because it does exceed, we just, we need a public hearing, we need an application that contains, uh, one seventy-five twenty-six point C to require a special permit, so it's a re, it's a refiling. Break me from the line, cause I'm not an expert here. If we refile with that, uh, one sev- one seventy-five twenty-six C, we can then hear and entertain issuing a special permit for the eight, for the extra twenty-five square feet.
Yeah.
Right, because it's, otherwise there hasn't been public notice that this was a special.
That's correct. That's the reason why we can't talk about it.
And again, when we look at these plans and you tell us about the situation you're in, it does make a lot of sense. Seems like you need the extra room, you need the bigger stairs. Seems like you need the extra room, you need the bigger stairs, I can understand that. So, just by looking.
So I, I just would ask that you, and I, shoot me now.
Yeah.
The application needs to be resubmitted with appropriate sites. And I'd please work with the zoning board to make sure it is. Do all the publication, everything, and we'll see you next month probably, or the month after, but.
Okay.
It could be as quick as next month, if you get it done quick enough.
So you withdraw without prejudice, we should have done that in the other one.
Yeah.
Withdraw without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
We should have done that with the other one.
Right.
So I withdraw without prejudice and have you resubmit.
Okay, and then resubmit, do, would I have to go through the butters list and print all that out, or should we?
Do the, it's not the whole, do the whole thing over, right?
Okay, whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, just work with our, our office and make sure whatever has to be done is done correctly. And make sure you include one-seventy-five thirty-two, one-seventy-five twenty-nine, and one-seventy-five twenty-six point C. That's the most important thing for the special permit.
And it's one-seventy-five thirty-two dash C?
One-seventy-five dash twenty-six dash C needs to be addressed in order for us to issue the special permit.
And if you have any questions, you can ask the building department exactly what you need to.
The building, yeah, the building department downstairs in the first floor can explain all of that to you, but it's all about the square footage.
Sure.
So because it exceeds the percentage allowed, it's greater than, we need a special permit to grant you that twenty-five extra square feet. So we have to cite that section in the public hearings, so the public knows what we're trying to do here. So we don't hide anything from the public.
Yeah, sure.
So it's all, it's all part of the same thing, so.
Sounds good, and just to verify, one-seventy-five dash thirty-two is for the in-law suite, one-seventy-five dash twenty-six for the variance.
Twenty-six dot C, don't forget that.
Twenty-six.
One-twenty-six dot C requires a special permit for the square footage.
And now, one-seventy-five thirty-two dash C, it's for the extra twenty-five square feet.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Dash I, yep.
Yeah, and that's on your original application.
Thank you.
So withdraw without prejudice.
And we'll see you again.
And then refile.
Okay.
And if we could, we could get. Just, I see that it's like pen written in, could you?
Yeah, so originally, I just brought in the copies of the, of the work that the assessor did.
Yeah.
And so, ooh, I've been bugging her all month, geez, and now I can't remember her name. Nancy, I've been calling her and bugging her all month, I mean, but she's been a good help.
Yes, she's very good.
So she actually said, you know, take a minute and write it down, so they can see where it's going, so that's why I did it right in the office.
Okay, okay. Just, just a little, maybe you can make it a little better.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry you got held up. No worries, thank you.
We're going to revisit an item that was on the agenda earlier. This is the.
It's two oh seven Bedford Street?
Two oh seven Bedford Street.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, before we, if we're bringing that up for discussion, before we open it up, or?
Uh, since there's no one here, we have to open up for discussion.
Just continue it.
There's a, there's a bullet point here in the bottom.
Yeah, just want you to see that one there.
Yeah, she wanted to, she. You got some issues with the planning board, right?
She says there is issues with the planning board, which we should wait.
Oh, yeah, we should just continue this because.
Until the planning board makes a decision, and we understand what the planning board's decision is, we shouldn't actually act on the zoning request.
We can't really act on it yet.
Nope, not at all.
So I, I motioned that this, I motioned, should I motion it, you want to motion?
I don't want to motion.
I'm tired of motioning tonight. On the petition of Lamb and Tech Chu Nugent, two oh seven Bedford Street, Abington, Mass. for a special permit under one-seventy-five dash forty C, section four, to construct an apartment building within the Z T C zone at two oh seven Bedford Street. The motion that we continue until the planning board reaches their final decision-making, and we can actually make a proper decision on what we should be doing at the zoning board. We have a date that we want to continue at too.
I, I would, I would express it out to January thirteenth, no sooner than January thirteenth. Because I don't know when the planning board is going to decide on that decision.
Good idea, yeah.
I would push it out to January thirteenth on my, on my, so I amend that to say I would, I would petition that we continue this through, through January thirteenth, pending the outcome of the planning board's decision-making process.
And we better bring our lunch next week.
I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring dog, I'm going to bring dog and cookies, okay, you'll be fine.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
I just want to bring up that one petition that we, that has to redo.
Resubmit.
Maybe we can contact them and just let them know that.
Withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, just the.
Do we want to vote that?
Uh, if you want to, go right ahead.
I would like, I would like just, just to cover up our basis. I believe that was forty-six Daniel or two oh nine Orchard.
Which one was that?
The one we were just. Seventy-five Niles? For the seventy-five Niles petition, hold on one second, please, thank you. For the petition of Fred Butts at seventy-five Niles Street, Abington, Mass. for the frontage setback variance under one-seventy-five twenty-nine, construction of a twenty-eight by twenty-eight barn and eight feet, eight point two feet from the property line at seventy-five Niles Street. In addition to our request for continuance, I would also like to withdraw without prejudice the application, so that the applicant can come from us again with a new application.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. And if we could put that on the note that we notified the claimant that there was withdrawal of petition. Thank you very much, Richard.
Yeah, I just.
Do we have to do that for the? For the fellow who?
No, he's just going to continue.
Because it's just a continuance, it's not a.
Yeah, Orchard. Yeah, he's just going to continue, he's going to work with the building spec to see what will work to attach, qualify him to.
So he's just going to abandon his?
He's just going to probably just make a new plan up and show it to us. So he doesn't, he doesn't have, he's not withdrawing, he's just, he's just going to check with the building spec.
And the fellow for Daniel Drive was going to give us elevations.
Yes.
So that also is a containment.
Yeah, that's a continue to, yep, yep.
Okay.
But anytime someone has an issue with like special permits like that, and they don't have it, and they, and they put it out in the newspaper and everything, if they didn't include something, and they come before us, we have to, they have to.
Repetition.
Yes.
They have to repetition, we can't.
Because we have to, you can't vote on something that.
The public isn't aware of.
Right.
That we're voting on.
Right.
Right, that's a requirement.
Okay, sounds like we're about done, uh, do we, a move that we, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
We are.